Thank you guys for tuning into the Virtual Candidate Forums hosted by Teaching for the Culture. My name is Bianca Goolsbee and I'm the founder and I'm here to say thank you for being here, for being engaged and being intentional with who is going to be in our school board seats. Our children deserve the best and we want to make sure that you are operating and you're listening very closely to what these candidates have to say. Thank you guys so much for following us. Make sure that you take a look at our website, www.teachitfortheculture.com. In addition to that, follow us on social media at Teaching for the Culture. Just a couple of rules. I want you guys to relax, have fun, and also be intentional with what the candidates have to say. If you post your questions, we will screen it and if we have enough time, we will make sure that those questions are addressed as well. Thank you to the community that have submitted questions to us and we are excited to get started.
Hello everyone and welcome to the District One Candidate Town Hall here from Teaching for the Culture Candidate Forum. My name is Ryan Hizinski and I am the host of Teacher Voice, the podcast and blog that some of you guys may know. I'm also a 16-year classroom teacher veteran, taught a number of different subjects. And for most of you who know me personally, pretty much could attest I'm a giant nerd. So it is my honor and pleasure to be here as the moderator and thank you so much for Bianca to invite me to this forum. So just to kind of review some information, if you would like to talk about this on social media, we're using the hashtags #DistrictOne and then hashtag vote and then your candidate's name that you're supporting. And just to go over some ground rules, the Teaching for the Culture Candidate Forum follows a nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format. Time limits for all comments will be strictly enforced. In fairness to all candidates in the audience, we ask that these limits be respected. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks to introduce themselves. I will then ask questions submitted by the audience. So that we can address as many questions as possible in the time available, each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. If time permits, candidates will also have two minutes for closing statement. In fairness to all candidates, we will rotate the order of how these questions are answered. We'll get started with the opening statements. Again, these are two minutes apiece. And we're going to start off with Mrs. Combs.
Good evening. Thank you so much for hosting the forum this evening. My name is Nadia Combs. I've spent 25 years working with students in Hillsborough County Schools. I'm a lifelong educator and I've owned two educational businesses. I have a master's degree in educational leadership. My passion has always been advocating for children. I spent 10 years as a teacher in Hillsborough County Public Schools. During those years, I taught dropout prevention. I was a team leader, department head, and district trainer. I was Teacher of the Year Franklin Middle School and I was Hillsborough County Schools' Social Studies Middle School Teacher of the Year. I've not only taught, but I volunteered in multiple organizations in Hillsborough County. I volunteered with the Boys and Girls Club with Brook sponge and I've also taught English to immigrant families in the Tampa Bay area. And I currently volunteer with the Children's Cancer Center. I am very familiar with District One. One of the businesses I started provided tutoring for eight years at 50% of the schools in District One. I provided tutoring for after-school and I started in that area and I grew to 17 districts in the state of Florida. I'm currently an owner of a tutoring business, so I am very, very familiar with education and charter, public, and private schools. The reason that I'm running for school board is because I want to make a positive impact in our community and in with our students. I have the experience, background, and knowledge to be an effective voice in our educational system. I spent more than 25 years advocating for children and working with our schools and community. I understand the importance of each individual and I want to make a positive impact for the students, faculty, staff, community, and Hillsborough County Public Schools. And I want you to vote for me, somebody with experience, dedication, and passion to make a difference for all of our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Next up, we have Mr. Kona.
Hey Ryan, thanks for being the moderator today. And Bianca and Teaching for the Culture, thank you for hosting this forum. It gives us the opportunity during this pandemic to reach out to the voters of District One. So my name is Steve Kona. I'm the vice chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. And just a year and a half ago, I was elected to be the representative for District One. And I can tell you in a very short period of time, we have delivered for our students and our teachers, some of the things I'm most proud of about what we've done in District One. We've created an IB program at Alonzo High School. We have also increased our dual enrollment programs and our dual language programs. We have done so much to affect the classroom in District One. And how that's happened is as a school board leader, my mission and goal was to be in every single school in my district. And every week I'm in schools. I am the biggest advocate for our children, our biggest advocate for our schools. And you can kind of see with the results in our school district, I will tell you that District One is the model of performance for, in our entire school district. We have 62% of our schools that are Title I. And out of those 62% Title I schools, 72 of them are A or B, 28% are C, no DNF schools. We have the model school district that other districts should follow. I'm very excited about being a school board member. I had to hit the ground running. We've approved teacher salary increases, not only for teachers, but also for the administration and for our support personnel. We've done a lot in a short period of time. And the thing that I'm most proud of is we've hired an outside superintendent to run our school district for the first time in 50 years. It took a lot of courage to do that and I think now we have a leader at the helm that's going to transform this district to an A school district.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kona. And go ahead, Mr. Person.
I think you two know I'm most comfortable with teachers and kids. I'm most comfortable around teachers and kids. I'll give you a little bit about my background and I'm going to go very quickly. Most important of all, I'm married to a Hillsborough teacher who is currently running for Florida House District 62. And I'm so excited about that. I'm a decorated U.S. Air Force veteran of the Vietnam War. I have a BA in English Ed and an MED, a master's degree in educational administration. I have 35 years in, I'm retired. I served 35 years in education with the Hillsborough County School District. 30 years of that 35 years was either site-based, school-based, or district-based administration. I was a junior high and high school English teacher. I was a junior high and high school assistant principal for 15 years before I became a junior high school and high school principal, a magnet principal at Dowdell Middle School. I opened up the magnet program there and I spent 10 years as an assistant principal for curriculum and four years as the principal at Tampa Bay Tech High School. I then became director, Division of Administration, and I retired as the general director in the Division of Administration. I authored the district's School Choice Student Assignment Plan. I developed School Choice in Hillsborough County. I was the lead administrator that worked with the federal government on the desegregation order going back to 1971. I was the educational liaison to McDEAL Air Force Base, working with military families. Upon retirement in 2011, I was appointed the chairman of the Florida School Choice Parent Advisory Council for the entire state of Florida under the Office of Independent Choice, Department of Education. I'm a candidate and I was a candidate for Hillsborough County Schools in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Person. I'm sorry that you guys can't hear that. For some reason, it's not ringing out loud now. I'll give the different timer. Before we start talking about specific issues and discussions regarding District One, let's establish a foundation on what the roles and responsibilities of a school board member are. We'll start the rotation with Mr. Steve Kona. So the first question is, what do you believe is the role of a school board member?
Well, Ryan, I think you have the role of a school board member, which obviously everyone knows, we hire and fire the superintendent, we create policy, and we oversee the financial health of the school district. But that's just what you do as a school board member on paper. What you do as a school board member is you get your tail into schools and you see where the problems are so you can be an advocate in the classroom. I can tell you so many times that I've become a better school board member because I go into schools every single week. I go into schools, I look at, I go into teacher classrooms, I see the learning that's being done. How would you know as a school board member that 56 of our schools didn't have covered courts unless you went to three schools in your district that didn't have any? How would you know that the PTA has been asking the administration for years to have a fan under their covered court? How do you facilitate that? You facilitate that because you go to the schools, you go to the parents. I learned a very long time ago that there are two types of people in this world. There are people that wait for things to happen and there are people that make things happen. I consider myself somebody who makes things happen and I go to the schools to figure out what they need and I try to advocate and deliver for them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kona. Next up, we have Mr. Person.
He is correct. The role of the school board member, policymaking, overseeing the superintendent, overseeing the establishing and approval of the budget. And I've worked with school boards going all the way back to the mid 60s. What has happened over the last five years in Hillsborough County is the issue isn't what you're supposed to do as a board member, it's what you shouldn't do as a board member. A board member is one of seven board members. They are not seven individual superintendents. What we've experienced since 2015 is at least three board members who are no longer with us, actually one is still with us, assumed the role of the superintendent. We're actively involved in the hiring, firing, demoting, evaluation of all levels of personnel in the district. And the superintendent who's not going to be with us in a few weeks wasn't able to stand up to these board members. The question is, what is the board member supposed to do?
That's time. Thank you so much, Mr. Person. Mrs. Combs.
As we've all said, we all know that the role of the school board is to be a policymaker, deal with the budget, but also we really need to be a voice and an advocate for District One and rest of Hillsborough County. I think it's really important that there's a lot of collaboration going on. I think there's so many changes occurring in our schools today. The needs are so different than they were even three months ago. So I think that a school board member really needs to be, have a pulse on what's going on in the school systems today, what's going on in the districts today, and to make sure that we are, that we are making sure that the superintendent is doing what's best for each child and that all of us work together to make, to make a difference in the schools.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. Okay, so question two, this one you'll be leading off, Mr. Person. An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district, something that you guys, many of you alluded to. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to the effective operation of the board as a whole? Mr. Person.
Sure. And as a, as a teacher all the way to a general director, I've been associated with the school district nearly 45 years. I've seen what works and doesn't work. And as a board member, it's difficult to call out a board member unless you're another board member. We've had profound problems in Hillsborough County and the state of this school district is sorry because of our senior leadership and administration and the problems with a handful of school board members. And I can tell you, I, more so than anyone in this forum, and I would say more so than anybody currently on the board, I have the experience and I know what is supposed to happen in the classroom. I taught. I know what's supposed to happen as a principal. I was a principal. And I know what's supposed to happen at the district office with, with the administration. I was a district administrator and I darn well know what's supposed to happen on that school board. And I will call out a board member, hopefully individually, before I do it publicly, was inappropriate.
Thank you so much, Mr. Person. Clearly having some timer malfunctions over here. So same question. Next up is Mrs. Combs.
The skills and traits I think the board member needs to have is I think they need to have a passion for education. I really feel they need to have an educational background and experience and not experience five or 10 years ago, current experience. So for, for me, I have, I'm working regularly in schools. I see curriculum from charter, public, public, private schools. I, I am also, I work well with others. I think it's important to have a partnership because you need enough members to vote to make a difference. So I think you need a collaboration together. I think you need a partnership and I think you need to have a strong educational background in order to really best meet the needs of our students.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. And finally, Mr. Kona.
I think that you'll see, you know, this school board is a school board that, that really gets along. We build bridges. I can't say that of previous school boards, but I'm very proud of the relationships that we have built on the school board and we have accomplished a lot in a very short period of time. Just when you think about, like you said, I can't do it alone. So in order for us to accomplish things, one of the things that we just recently accomplished is in our elementary schools and we knew that we have a covered court problem. And you bring this up in a workshop and you get, you get your other board members to agree with you and then all of a sudden, now every, every single one of our elementary schools, all 56 of them by the end of the calendar year are going to have a covered court. You have to build bridges. You cannot, you can't burn bridges in this business. And this district will only be as good as its school board. And I think that we have great school board members that, that work well together and, and we hope to continue that with our new superintendent.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kona. Okay, so question three comes directly from Teaching for the Culture and this will start off with you, Mrs. Combs. District Five is a district that requires all hands on deck to assist with the systemic issues that the community and students face. How do you plan to collaborate with the work needed in District Five? And can you commit to make this a priority as well?
Well, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I taught in District Five for many years. I taught a dropout prevention in District Five. I've spent a lot of time in District Five. So I'm very familiar with the systemic issues and the problems. And so I think when we look at what we have to do to make a difference with our students, we can't look at just our own District One. We have to work together. We have to make sure there's equity for each and every student in every school. So I know Mr. Kona spoke about District One doing so well, but we need to look at the districts as a whole and what's going to best meet every single student in our district. So working with the systemic issues, looking at how things have changed in the last couple months and making sure that we ensure we have the zero tolerance in our district, but also looking at the training that we've been put in place recently. Do we need to look at how we have to readdress that or readjust that? So that way we make sure that every single student in Hillsborough County Public School is treated with equity and they receive the same education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Next up, we have Mr. Kona.
Thank you, Ryan. This, this, this district as a whole will not be excellent until we get District Five figured out. And I will tell you, as a school board member, I've spent a lot of time in District Five. We have the opportunity to make that district great. And what, what it's going to need, what it needed was a change in leadership from a new superintendent and a new direction. We just replaced over 36 principals in our last school board meeting. We have new energy in District Five. District, this, like I said, this district will not be successful until District Five is fixed. We have to continue to invest in programs. I continue to invest in Middleton High School's construction technology program. We can get District Five fixed and that's going to be the focus of our entire school district come, really come fall.
Thank you so much. And finally, Mr. Person.
I want to talks about the harmony on the school board. You have one board member just resigned this week, effective November. And the other board member in District Five is in a knockdown drag out with the candidates and with the community. The community's fully split, partly because of the appointment of the superintendent. So there isn't harmony on this school board. There hasn't been harmony on our school board for a long time. And I can say to you, the issues in District Five are the most pressing issues in Hillsborough County. And it's going to take all seven school board members working in harmony, which you don't have now on this board, to fix this problem. You got a board member in District Five that's going on four years and now is vocal about the issues in District Five. Mr. Kona stated, when I ran against him in 2016, that he didn't want to be superintendent. And when the issue came up that board members were uncomfortable with Mr. Atkins, Mr. Kona said he wanted Mr. Atkins to stay. And in fact, he would want a superintendent just like Mr. Atkins.
Thank you so much. Our next question is, starts off with Mr. Kona. What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a school board member?
Well, Ryan, I will tell you, I'm a proud product of this school district. I went to public school my entire career. My parents went to public schools their entire career. I send my, my kids to our public schools. I've learned so much being a school board member. My business background gives me the opportunity to handle the business side, but what I'm most proud of coming into this school district is what I've done on the academic side to move this school district forward. We've done a lot of things that are going to be the example for the entire school district and I can't wait to start working to ensuring with our new superintendent to accelerate Hillsborough and make sure that this school district becomes an A school district.
Thank you so much. Mr. Person, you are next.
As a, as your new board member is, I strongly feel that we need to, let's place the priority of the school district on people and not on the profit, profits for the private sector. Mr. Kona says he has done wonders for academics in the district. Mr. Kona's a businessman and Mr. Kona is your board member because Mr. Bull, Mr. Kona's number one priority is the business of education. He's a businessman. He's not an educator like Ms. Combs and like myself. Mr. Kona is there to facilitate the process of the private sector in corporate Florida. That's why Mr. Kona is there. He was a board of trustees appointed by the governor. That's his experience in education before he was elected as a board member. And he's allied himself with anti-public education forces in the state of Florida. That's why he's your board member right now. I disagree with Mr. Kona.
Thank you, Mr. Person. And Mrs. Combs.
Both business and education. There's another, there's not another candidate like myself. Not only have I been teaching for 25 years, I've built two businesses, two educational businesses from the ground up, one which provided thousands and thousands of students in 17 districts in the state of Florida after school tutoring. And now I own a tutoring center. And I worked in the classrooms in Hillsborough County Public Schools for 10 years. I worked at Franklin. I worked at Sly. I worked in those District Five. I worked, I was a department head in District One at Davidson Middle School. So when I, I have the skills of education, business, I'm passionate, I work well with others. I will, I will make sure that there's accountability and transparency. I do not have, you know, there's no secondary reason that I'm running except for I want to serve the community and I want to serve our students and I want to make an impact in education. That's why I'm here today.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. So our next question is, the recent events in our nation have shined a spotlight on the apparent conscious and unconscious racial biases in our institutions. What are some action steps as a board member to hold people accountable for their biases that directly impact teachers and their students? And leading off on this one will be Mr. Person.
The problems we faced in the past, due process. And due process, you use due process to take issue with somebody and terminate their employment, employment with the school district. You have to notify somebody when their behavior is unacceptable. You need, it's called NEAT. You notify them, you explain what the problem is, you assist them, and if they don't show progress specifically with the address, this issue we're talking about, you terminate them. NEAT. So you have to start with due process. This country is in a revolution, a social revolution. It's in a pandemic and now as of February, we're in a real recession, facing a depression, something none of us have seen. I haven't seen this country in this bad a shape since 1968 when I was a senior in a high school.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Mrs. Combs.
Issues that are with the racial inequality is something that we have to make sure, that is the, the, the number one priority for our schools right now. I mean, we are coming back from a pandemic and we need to really look at how we're going to deal with students who have even larger gaps now after all of what's occurring in our society. So I agree that we need to make sure that we continue our zero tolerance policy and we also need to look back at the training and make sure that all of our school administrators, I'm sorry, thank you, everybody is in, is on the same page with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. And Mr. Kona.
It's my belief that education is the great equalizer and we have to do our best to ensure that even in our low-income areas, that we provide A schools for those children. We have a lot of work to do in that area. I'm proud to be in the effort to, to do that work. If anyone in this district harms a child, they should be terminated. There is no due process when you harm a child, in my opinion. I think when you cause harm, we cannot have people in this school district that hurt children. And I, I personally don't feel that, you know, if you hurt a child, you need to be terminated. And, you know, we've, we've done a lot. Our school district has been praised by, with our racial equity policy, we're implementing that. We have a lot of work to do. Our policy isn't going to be secure until all of the schools in District Five are A and B schools.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kona. So leading off on our next question will be Mrs. Combs. Where do you stand on school choice options outside of the district-managed options? In support or against?
Well, choice is a law. I mean, we, we have to approve choice. I am against for-profit charter schools, but I am supportive charter schools as long as they are good, good charter schools. Myself as an educator who I see students every day from charter, public, and private schools, I can tell you the charter schools that are effective and I can tell you the ones that are ineffective. Unfortunately, the parents don't know that. So we need to make sure that there's accountability. I went to an IEP meeting last year to charter school where the student had not been tested and was not able to be placed in ESE because there was no accountability. So we need to make sure that we're out there and that parents know what is going to be the best choice for them. We, our schools, public, I want to work together to make our public school system the best choice possible. So that way, the charter schools are a secondary choice. So I am against for-profit. I would like for parents to continue to have choices that, like as they do in the district for magnet schools, charter schools.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. Next up, we have Mr. Kona.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm for choice. I don't think a parent should be, should not have the ability to put their children in a school of their choice. But with that being said, it's my job as a public school board member to make sure that our public schools are the best option for our students. And I will tell you that the charter schools in District One, they have a hard time in District One because we, as, as a district, we set the pace in District One. You know, as a school board member, we have to approve charters. We also have the ability to oversee charters and we, we provide that oversight. In fact, just recently, we shut down a charter school for being ineffective. But we have to provide the proper oversight. We also have to allow parents to choose, but we need to make public schools the best option and that's what we've done in District One.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Person.
Of course, folks, what I did for the school district is school choice. What I did for the Department of Education when I retired was statewide Department of Education, school choice. I know school choice. And like Ms. Combs, I, I abhor for-profit charters. I abhor people who make a profit off public schools. I do support community-run, nonprofit charter schools that are functional and work well. So there's a big difference between a for-profit charter and a nonprofit charter. I am openly opposed to the expansion of for-profit charter schools and I'm openly opposed to the expansion of vouchers. And I will say to you, in my opinion, Mr. Kona lines up right with Susan Valdez and right with the governor and right with the commissioner of education and right along with Betsy DeVos when they push choice, in their definition of choice is, to move students and money out of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Person. So leading off on this next question will be Mr. Kona. "What top three priorities should be on the district's legislative advocacy plan to address equity in the community?"
Well, I think number one is funding. The Tallahassee has done a great job of putting more and more pressure on school districts to provide services for our, for our students. So 100% funding is the top thing, and I think this year, we've done a great thing in ensuring that we actually got $500,000 for our STEM initiative this year because this school board decided to actually hire government affairs firms to actually go and get more money for the school district. So funding is number one. Number two is we have to do better in ESE, and number three, we have to do better in career and technical education, and we need funds for that, and we need to lobby Tallahassee in order for us to expand those programs here locally.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up, Mr. Person.
I know that both government affairs firms that received contracts from the Hillsborough County Schools donated to Mr. Kona's campaign. Mr. Kona has raised $81,000 already. Ms. Combs and I have zero in our accounts as of this moment. 87% of Mr. Kona's donations are at $1,000 or 500 to $1,000.
Mr. Person, the question about the three priorities on the legislative advocacy plan.
87% of Mr. Kona's donations have come from big donors. $50,000 of that is $1,000 donations. 13% of Mr. Kona's donations are less than $500. Mr. Kona is working for corporations in corporate Florida in the private sector at the disadvantage of public school parents and kids.
Mrs. Combs?
I, I also think that it's very, very important the funding, and I also think what's really important is the expansion of technical and vocational. I am very passionate at having, students have more options with technical, vocational, different apprenticeships. I think that we need to think about teacher pay and also just the teacher community to make sure that teachers are feeling positive and supportive. And in addition to that, I also think that we need to really do grassroots to make sure that it is equitable for all of our students in District One and throughout all the districts.
Thank you so much. Okay, starting with Mr. Person, share the work you've done or visits you've made to elementary, middle, and/or high schools in the community you plan to serve in, in the past six months.
Oh, you want to repeat that question, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. Share the work you've done or visits you've made to elementary, middle, and/or high schools in the community you plan to serve in the past six months.
I've, I've visited no schools in this, in this district in the last six months. And one of the reasons is because my relationship with the school board and the outgoing former superintendent. I'm not too sure I could go on a campus, but yet we have candidates in District Five that are on campuses every day. I have a difficult relationship with the status quo since 2015, and Ryan, you and Bianca know it. I have done a podcast with both of you, and I encourage the voters to listen to that podcast. Ryan will tell you how to hear teaching, how to hear a teacher voice, and Bianca will tell you about teaching for the culture. I've taken issue with the district. I've been a critic of most of board members and a profound critic of the outgoing superintendent. I can tell you, I am not welcome by some administrators and teachers in this district.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Mrs. Combs?
I've gone out to multiple schools. I, you know, it's just recently that I've decided to run, but I have been very active in many, many schools throughout Hillsborough County Public Schools. I volunteer regularly. I was in West Chase Elementary. I attend IEP meetings on a regular basis. I meet with ESE families. I'm an advocate for the parents. So I'm out to the schools very often. I've started reaching out to principals, letting them know that, guess what? You have an educator who wants to stand for your district. You, you have someone who not only has an education background, a business background, a passion, who understands the needs of our students today. So on a regular basis, I'm out there meeting with children, talking to children. As a matter of fact, even today, I worked with a student who came to me from Canela Elementary, and I worked with them earlier today. So I, I am out working with schools in the community on a daily basis. I'm not behind a desk. I'm not in my house. I'm out there working and serving the community.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Mrs. Combs, and Mr. Kona.
Sorry, Ryan. Every week for the last year and a half, I've been in our schools. I've been in our schools. I've been forging relationships with principals, teachers, students, PTAs. I'm in it to be an advocate for the classroom. That's my job as a school board member. I can tell you, I've been to fifth grade parades, clapouts, PTA meetings, you name it. They invite me. They don't even have to invite me. I show up. I show up for our grab and goes. We fed over 5 million meals to students during the pandemic, and this week, we fed, you know, over 100,000 meals this week. We go to the schools. We check in on all the construction that's going on. You can't be a school board member and sit on the sidelines. You have to be in schools every single week. You have to have great relationships with your principals, and you can ask any principal in District One if Steve Kona is at their school, and they will tell you all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Kona. Okay, next. In one minute, if you are elected, please provide the audience with your version of your 90-day plan. And starting off, this one is going to be Mrs. Combs.
Okay, so for my, for my first 90 days, what I would like to focus on, I think the most important thing is looking at this e-learning platform. I mean, this is really, really critical.
Am I the only one that went dark, or?
Hello, everyone. I think we're experiencing some technical difficulties. Did we lose just Mrs. Combs? All right, for the moment, why don't we just move forward and we'll have, Mr. Kona, why don't you go ahead with your one minute for the 90-day plan?
Well, as your school board member, I have the ability to execute, and I've been executing for the last year and a half. Working with my fellow school board members, we have to continue to accelerate Hillsborough. We can't rest until we have no more failing schools in our school district, and we have to work diligently to make that happen. We can do that. We have, you know, if I'm elected for another four-year term, my goal is to promise the constituents of Hillsborough County that we will not have any more DNF schools. It's unacceptable, and there is no plan better than ensuring that no child in this district sits in a failing school. And my experience in District One, I, we're going to share that across the other districts, and we're going to create a school district with no failing schools, Ryan. That's the 90-day plan. That's the everyday plan.
Thank you, sir, and Mr. Person.
I'm so glad to hear Mr. Kona say he's going to focus on instruction. That's enlightening. Mr. Kona, one of the first things he did was move towards privatization of 1,500 custodians one year ago. He was barely on the board four or five months, and he wanted to terminate 1,500 custodians and privatize custodian services. If that had happened, where would those 1,500 custodians be today in this economic environment? Cindy Stewart and Steve Kona pushed that, and Mr. Kona, even though he lost, continued to say he wants to move towards privatization. What's next, Mr. Kona? Bus drivers? Food services? School security?
Welcome back, Mrs. Combs. Sorry about the difficulties. Again, we have one minute to explain your 90-day plan.
Okay, well, this was a great example of how technology is going to be really important. I think we really need to look at this e-learning platform. I think parents are very, very concerned about their health of their children entering school and what the schools are going to look like and what e-learning is going to look like. This is a great example of me being on and all of a sudden, technology not working. And I really have a vision, and that's why I think it's really important to bring someone who has an instructional approach to education, to can guide the policies of what is occurring. I also think we need to look at the social inequity that's occurring and throughout Hillsborough County schools. The other thing I really want to look at is Hillsborough Virtual School. I think that's really important. Why are so many students in our county signing up for Florida Virtual School instead of Hillsborough Virtual School? So there are a lot of different things that I think we need to look as far as instructional plans and also the social inequities in our schools.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Person, you're going to lead us off on this next one. According to the latest FSA data, 73% of our third-grade students were not proficient in reading. We know reading is the foundation of a strong formative education. What is your vision for reading instruction in District One, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Resources. I'm not too sure waiting till the third grade is the best thing to do to retain a student who's not reading at levels prior to third grade. Allocation of resources. We talked about District Five. We talked about the learning gap. How many schools have had substitute teachers all the way into February? And from August to February with substitute teachers? And speaking about privatization, are we spending $76,000 a day on substitutes under a private contract? You need to reallocate our resources and put our emphasis where it's needed most. And once again, we need to focus on the people of education and get off the profits of education. We're not working for corporate Florida. We're working for the parents in Hillsborough County, and we've done a pretty sorry job the last five years. Reallocate your sources and readdress when you hold these kids back who can't read.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Mrs. Combs?
Well, this is something that I'm very knowledgeable and that I'm very passionate about. I am very passionate about going back to the basics. I probably think both the candidates aren't very familiar with the new benchmark for excellence in student thinking. I am very, very proactive, and I'm very knowledgeable about curriculum. We need to put more emphasis on our preschool program and getting our students ready for kindergarten. Already, when students start in kindergarten, there is such an inequity among students. Some students are reading, and some students still do not know their letters. So we really need to focus on those primary skills, and we also need to stop teaching to the test. It's really important that we bring back the love of education and the love of learning for our students, and we're going to do that by starting at the very beginning, strengthening our preschool programs, giving support to our kindergarten teachers, and then having our students ready to do well in third grade. Because as we know, by the end of third grade, it really decides if you're going to do well in school or not. So having, having students come to my center at kindergarten who already don't feel good about themselves, who already don't feel confident, who do not like school, what type of future is that child going to have? So we really need to focus on the curriculum and instruction and the best instructional practices in this county, and we're going to do that with somebody like me who's in school board who knows about education and also knows about business.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. I'm sorry, I'm having, again, some timing malfunctions over here, but I just have to say this and interject as an educator because everything you just said really spoke to me in terms of every person I talked to, in fact, I think all of you would agree with what I'm about to say. We grew up in a day and age where an education was about building a true foundation for life. That really did prepare us for life. It wasn't about being driven to the test and these metrics, and, you know, there's so many challenges that we're facing, and it is kind of crushing the love of learning. It's not what we grew up with, and we really do have to get back, as you said, Mrs. Combs, back to basics in some sense. So thank you. I think that was a wonderful response. As a teacher, I couldn't help but at least share that one perspective among these many. So thank you so much. Mr. Kona.
Ryan, could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Absolutely, absolutely, sir. So according to the latest FSA data, 73% of our third-grade babies were not proficient in reading. We know reading is the foundation of a strong formative education. What is your vision for reading instruction in District One, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right, Ryan, and Ms. Combs hit on some great points. I'd like to take it a little bit further. We need mandatory VPK in our schools. Our kids are coming to kindergarten not prepared. They're not prepared to learn. They're not prepared to, to be in school. Mandatory, I think mandatory VPK, especially in District Five, I think that's something that we can all put some resources towards and make mandatory VPK programs in our District One, District Five schools. I think you're going to see great results. And we've seen kids that are in our public VPK programs, they excel when they get to kindergarten. We need to make that mandatory for all of our District Five students so we can grow them and have them get a head start. But you're right, it starts at VPK, and we have to, and let's talk about testing for a second. We test our kids way too much. I'm for eliminating as many tests as possible. We test our kids too much, and we take the fun out of learning. You're correct.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kona. Okay, the next question, and leading off will be Mrs. Combs. "Elected officials have a tendency to become disconnected after winning an election. How do you plan to continuously hear the voice of your constituents?"
The way I'm going to hear their voice is how I've always heard their voices, by going out there and working, working with the students, putting my hands, hands in, in, with students in the community and at schools, going to community centers. When I go into a school, I'm looking for more than what's aesthetic. I'm looking, what's working in that school? What instructional practices are working? What's not working? What is our community need? Looking at after-school, before-school programs. I know that there's no question, there is such a need for business partnerships and community partnerships, and I can go out there and bring those together. Because from my background, opening, starting two businesses from the ground up, I know how to reach out to the community and bring them into the schools. So I will be there every day, working tirelessly with our students, our elementary, middle, with our administrators, with our custodians, our cafeteria. Every single person in that community matters, and if we work together, then we can really make a difference for our students.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. Mr. Kona?
Thank you, Ryan. District One has a school board member that's in their schools every single week. We have to continue that. We have to continue that push, and we have to hold each other accountable. When I came into this school district, one of the things that I was shocked about was people were okay with DNF schools. It's not okay. It's not okay to have DNF schools. So how I, as a school board member, decided to fix that problem was to be in the schools every single day and hold people accountable. Look, we have people in this, in this school district that hadn't, haven't been held to a level of accountability. We spend a lot of money in this school district. We support a lot of people. The least that the people that support our school district can do is we all need to be held accountable to the same standard. As a school board member, I'm held accountable every two or four years. Everyone needs to be held accountable. So if our schools aren't clean, who's going to be held accountable? If, you know, we're not doing the jobs for our students, who's going to be held accountable? So being a school board member, being in the schools, District One has a school board member that's in schools every single week.
Thank you, Mr. Kona, and Mr. Person.
Voices of constituents. I ran for school board in 2016 against a troubled school board member. I received 48.9% of the vote as a brand-new politician after a career in education. The incumbent had been there for 12 years. She won by 267 votes. I ran against Mr. Kona in 2018, and I beat Mr. Kona in the primary, and I lost to Mr. Kona in the general at 46%. Mr. Kona bonded with that previous school board member to help him win that election. I had been hearing from constituents since 2014. I retired in 2011. I never intended to run for school board, but the school district had gotten so bad that those thousands upon thousands of employees called me on the telephone, came to my home and sat at this table and cried and told me how badly they were treated by the school board members. One of those school board members supported Mr. Kona.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Next up, Mrs. Combs.
I think you already asked me the question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, leading off, I'm sorry about that. Leading off, Mr. Kona, the next question will be, what would you want to see in the superintendent's budget to address equity?
Well, I'd like to see as much resources as possible to our lower-income schools, and I think that we, he's, he's done that. And I think what you've seen so far from our new superintendent is that we've created the framework. So when we get our students back in the fall, the framework so when we get our students back in the fall, that we're going to have real results in our district. And we're going to hold everyone accountable to those results, me as a school board member and the superintendent. You know, we have to be accountable to our children. There's no more excuses. And I think that when you look at our budget, you will see that we're going to be using a lot of resources to make sure in early childhood education in our lower-income areas, I think that's going to be an investment that is going to reap lots of rewards for us in the future. And we're going to be well on our way to being the best school district in the state of Florida. So I'm confident in that, and I'm confident in our new superintendent. And we're going to be a lot better place in a very short period of time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kona? Mr. Person?
And I agree with Mr. Kona, and I do sometimes. Equity is what this is all about. Many, many, or most of our students have a one shot at a successful future, and that's through a quality, fully-funded public education. Not a school district that's handicapped through hemorrhaging funds for vouchers, for for-profit charters, for capital outlay for corporations that build for-profit charters. I would love to see more money and have our superintendent, and I think he will, go ahead and move towards equity. The problems you talked about in District Five are equity issues. According to Mr. Kona, things are rosy now in District One. I don't think that's the case. But District Five is in serious trouble. And as a board member, I'll give as much attention to District Five and equity as I will to my own district, District One. I'll ensure that all students and all parents are treated with equity and caring in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Person and Mrs. Combs.
I think as we approach and we're looking at the superintendent's budget, we need somebody who has educational experience. I think that is just critical. I think anyone to really make sound decisions in the budget needs to have, you know, a background in education. Also, I think we need somebody in the school board who wants to work with the school board, who wants to partner and work with the superintendent to make sure that there is equitable access to education for all of our students. I'm running in District One, but I am really thinking about every single district in Hillsborough County. So I want to make sure it's equitable for all the students, making sure that the best teachers and the best administrators and the best staff at all our schools, especially schools that are really struggling in this county. So we need to make sure we have equitable access as far as resources, teachers, facilities, and ensuring that each child, no matter where they go in our Hillsborough County schools, they're getting the best education possible.
Thank you so much. Mr. Person, you're going to be leading us off on this next question. Hillsborough County Public Schools leads the prison to pipeline in the state of Florida. What policies and work as an elected official will you commit to do in order to combat the systemic issue?
Interesting. When I was in this, I became an assistant principal in 1981 at East Bay High School. And that was the advent of the School Resource Officer. Up until that time, we did not have police on the campus. What's happening in this country as we go through this social revolution is a reassessing of the role of the law enforcement in the community as a whole. It may not be necessary to call in law enforcement when you can call in counselors, psychologists, crisis, people trained in crisis intervention and not have to go down the judicial path with citizens. You can do the same thing with children. You don't need to have children in handcuffs. You don't need to call in law enforcement. In fact, you should call in law enforcement like you do on a community issue. Bring them in from the outside. Let's not have them on our staff. Now, of course, Chad Kronister may not like this, but Chad, I believe, picks up 50% of the budget, and the school board picks up the other 50%. But we need to address the reality of what's happening in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Next up, we have Mrs. Combs.
Well, I'm very, very passionate about this. When I worked at Franklin Middle School and I worked in the dropout prevention program, that's what we did. We worked with students who are either coming in from the juvenile system or about to be placed in the juvenile system. I really think we need to go back to the basics and provide students the ability to be successful, and that means that they need to have options. I mean, there needs to be a move more towards technical vocational schools now more than ever. When you're seeing what's happening at universities across the country, we need to make sure, you know, if students are educated early, if they find one person that they can connect with at the school. I know for myself, my personal experience, just some connections with teachers made a lifelong impact on me. So we need to make sure that those students are supported and also through the system and also that they have a lot of different options and that they have support from the community and that we're bringing in community members, we're bringing in business members, and we're supporting our students.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. And closing us out, Mr. Kona with his question.
We have to be better to our Black and Brown students. Plain and simple, we have to be better. We have to provide more programs for them. We have to provide more support. That's why I've invested personally in Latos' electrical program, why I've invested personally in Middleton's construction program. We have to create programs that are going to allow every single student in our district to thrive. We have to do that. We need more programs. We have to put more resources in early childhood education in our lower-income schools, and we have to be better. Our district will not be great unless we get our Black and Brown students, who, quite frankly, we're a majority-minority district, school district. So we have to be better, and, you know, we put policies in place, we put programs in place, we just have to execute. The plan is there. We have a superintendent who understands that, who's done that in Clay County, and he's going to do that in Hillsborough County, and he needs a board that's going to support those efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Kona. Okay, for the final question that was from the prepared ones that were solicited beforehand, what is your vision for education in Hillsborough County and your district, specifically District One? And leading us off on this question will be Mrs. Combs.
Okay, well, my vision today is probably different than it was six months ago. I think right now, we need to make sure our schools are safe and equitable. We really need to come up with a plan. Parents, no, parents want to prepare for the school year. We need to come up with a plan on how to make sure the kids are safe as they enter schools and that schools are equitable. We also really need to look at instructional practices and how we can support our teachers. And finally, I'm very passionate about having different programs. I don't think a program in Middleton and Latos enough. I think we need to have more options for vocational, technical. Also, we need to increase the capstone programs. We need to really look at how we can prepare all our students, every single student across Hillsborough County and District One. And although we do have programs in Latos and we do have a brand-new IB program, I still think it's not enough. We need to provide more of those programs for all of our students.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Combs. Mr. Kona?
Ms. Combs is right, it's not enough. And I've only been elected for a year and a half, and I've accomplished all of those things. So I'm looking for the voters to give me four more years to get this school district moving in the right direction. I think we are well on our way. We've put everything in place, and now we just have to deliver. And you need consistency on this board. You need leaders on this board who are going to drive the work. You know, we can't afford to have agitators on the school board. We need leaders, and leaders who have accomplished something. I've accomplished what they couldn't do in a very long period of time, putting an IB program in Alonzo. The first time I got here, they told me, no, Steve, we can't put an IB program there. I beat down the walls until now we have one. So I don't take no for an answer when we're delivering for our kids. I hold myself to a very high standard, and I hold everyone else to the same level of accountability as the voters hold me to.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Person?
Yes. Vision for the future. Instruction and people are the highest priority in Hillsborough County schools. Mr. Kona's not an example of that. He talks that, but he's not. He talks he doesn't want an agitator on the school board. Do you want someone on a school board who's going to deliver the school district into the hands of the private sector? Are you comfortable with Governor DeSantis and Commissioner Cochrane and Betsy DeVos? Go ahead and vote for Mr. Kona. He's going to go ahead and move this district into the private sector. I can guarantee it. My vision is we do everything we can and do more for kids and for teachers and employees and families and those that need the most. That's my vision for the future. And by the way, I don't play. And if you haven't picked that up in this presentation today, you'll see that I don't play. I'll get on that board, and I'll make it happen. Mr. Kona's going to continue to work for the private sector and will not do what we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Person. For everyone who is watching, thank you so much for tuning in. We do not have any additional questions, but we do still have our closing statements coming up from each of the candidates. Before that time, though, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be on, for allowing me to be a moderator. I've had kind of some technical difficulties here and there. I've been trying not to laugh at myself too much. So thank the entire audience and the candidates for being gracious with me as the moderator and having me on. And if I were going to have a closing statement for my vision, for something that I think education should be, getting back to what you guys are saying, because I think this really connects to much of what I heard from all of the candidates, in that the education that we grew up with, where there was far more time for just recess, unstructured play, where children were allowed to go outside and really learn from one another. And, I mean, everything that we know about child development and psychology tells us it's what's going to help children develop the most. And those kinds of things, getting the screens out of their faces when they're too young and reducing all the testing, you know, bringing back that love of learning, really teaching kids about the brain, I think, would be so important in today's day and age, especially when we know we could combat these cognitive biases that every single human being has, all of us do. And if we know more about the brain and we actively taught students about this and how to actually recognize these biases, perhaps we would live in a world that is much more peaceful. At least, that is my hope as an educator when I go into that classroom every day. So I just wanted to at least say that before, and thank you so much for allowing me to be a moderator here tonight. And there is a poll, so I'm going to mention this beforehand. The poll link is at HTTPS or just basically www.teachingfortheculture.com/d1. So Teaching for the Culture, all one word, dot com slash D1. And so for our closing statements, we have two minutes apiece, and we're going to start this off with our current incumbent candidate, Mr. Kona.
Ryan, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Bianca, for hosting this forum today. And thank you to both Bill and Nadia. It was great to meet Nadia today in person. So Nadia, it's great seeing you. Look, this has been the most rewarding work that I have ever done. I've been a school board member that has fought tirelessly for the classroom. Everything that I have done in this school district is to benefit the classroom, the teachers and the students. Ask any principal in School District One, they know that if they need something, they have a school board member that's going to fight for them. And the teachers need something, if the PTAs need something, they know that they can count on Steve Kona to deliver for them. That's the kind of leadership that I provide to this school district. This school district was, in a way, mediocre. And I think now, this board has had the foresight to hire a superintendent from outside that hasn't been done in 50 years. He's brought an outside perspective. He's brought people into this school district that is going to move the work for our students. He needs a board, and he needs leadership that are going to move that, this district in the right direction. I'm humbled to serve District One. It's been the greatest experience of my life, and you can look at the results. There's no excuses with me. There's only results. And I would appreciate, and I would be very grateful to have your support for another four-year term. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you, Mr. Kona. Next up, Mr. Person?
And I've been hard on Mr. Kona, and obviously, everyone knows it. Mr. Kona and I have tangled before, but Mr. Kona now knows this is going to be a different election, a different campaign than we had recently. There's only three of us in this forum who've stood before students in the classroom. Students are different, but classroom teachers do not treat students differently. I am very concerned that our board members, including Mr. Kona, do not understand fully and appreciate the culture of public education and the culture of public educators. I'm really enlightened to see Ms. Combs run for this seat. I was concerned when she came in so late, I was concerned that she could be a shill like what happened to me in the last campaign. But I think she's for real. And I tell you, if I cannot be your board member, I encourage you to take a good look at Ms. Combs. That's the future of Hillsborough County, and that's the future of the school board. I love kids, and I love teachers, and that's the most important thing to me in the world. And this has been my life, my vocation, and my career. And please take that in consideration if you feel I'm harsh. But being a good guy is not what you need right now. You need someone who's effective and will deliver the school system into a safe place. I did it at Tampa Bay Tech, I did it at Doudel, and I did it as your director at the district office, all that in 35 years. I've proven myself. We have candidates who have yet to prove theirselves, and you can't do it in 18 months. It took me 43 years. Thank you. Be patient with me. My heart's in the right place, and I'm going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And closing us out for the evening, Mrs. Combs.
Thank you so much. And Ryan, everything that you said really speaks to my heart and my passion, because I feel so, so passionate about students. And I'm with you, Mr. Pearson. I also feel like we really need to have somebody in the school board who knows instructional practice, who knows teachers, who knows the classroom, and somebody who's going to go in and work with the school board. I am the future of Hillsborough County. I hope that this evening, you had an opportunity to get to know more about my passion and my vision to make a difference in our schools. I've dedicated my life to working with students and communities through my years of teaching and building two businesses from the ground up. I know I have the skills and ability to be effective in our schools and our community. There are so many challenges that we're facing today, and we need to elect someone with previous and as well as current educational experience. I can guide our students into the future. I'm not here for a stepping stone in my political career. I'm here because I want to make an impact not only for District One, but for District Five, for District Four, for every district in Hillsborough County. I'm the mother of two high school students who attend Hillsborough Public Schools. I know of what is best for our children. We need to implement strategic policies that's going to meet the needs of each and every student in our county. I know firsthand of the dedication that all of our teachers, our custodians, our administrators, our secretaries, our PTA and our community make. I assure you, when I'm elected to the school board, that I'm going to work tirelessly with each and every school in the district. I will make sure that your voices are heard, that our students have the best education possible. I will be in those schools, looking at ways that we can move our students academically, and that way, they have choices so they have the best future possible. So I want you to learn about me and more about me at votenadiacombs.com, and I want you to know what I represent and how I can make a difference for your children and the community in Hillsborough County.
So much. Thank you so much, and thanks, everyone who are tuning in. And again, don't forget to check out the poll and make sure you vote in the straw poll. And be sure to check out all the candidates on their social media and websites and learn more about each of them. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you, Ryan.